Is there any public comment on the agenda items? Yes?
Is there somebody else that would like to go ahead of me?
I saw no other hand.
Okay, Marie DeGangi, 1510 Cranbury Road. A comment is actually an opinion. The reason I'm here this evening is to petition redress of grievances with the elected officials and to exercise the rights and protections under the First Amendment of the Constitution. As to my right to know requests listed on the agenda, as of December 8th, 2022, Board of Supervisors meeting my name and that of another resident was on the agenda. I therefore requested that the township record, the recording be preserved, and I requested a copy indicating that the details could be worked out the next day. That being a right to know request. Chair Geis indicated no, that the recording was only for the use of the secretary. Being familiar with the right to know law, I knew that these recordings are considered public records. I am also aware, and previously aware, of the actual advisory opinion that's on the Open Records website. So I asked Chair Geis if he was refusing my request. He replied yes. The next morning, I hand-delivered a right to know request to the Recording Secretary, Davis, and she's also the appointed Open Records Officer. On December 15th, she emailed Holly and Katie at PSAT. She included my right to know request and the recording policy of this township. She indicated the resident attended the meeting she wants the recording of. She was told on more than one occasion, at more than one meeting, that the recording is just for the secretary's use. Maybe we didn't use the right wording in the policy. Can I let her come in and listen to it? Should I do an extension? Are my five days already up? I'm just reading this because I know there's a time limit on this. So, on December, that evening, Kathy Liza from PSAT replied to her, and she indicated the Office of Open Records has issued the advisory opinion stating that the recordings of public meetings are public records. On the timing, Ms. Liza said that you had till Friday the 16th. That actually isn't so, but we're not going to quibble over one day. A couple of other notes she indicated. You may want to remind her, meaning me, that anyone in attendance is welcome to record public meetings on their personal devices. Ms. Davis, the next time you speak with her, or email, or let her know, I don't need someone to remind me of my rights. August 11th meetings, minutes of the meeting, Mr. Geis made a motion for our meeting recording policy be that we will record all meetings for the secretary's use. As soon as the minutes are prepared, the recording will be erased. Mr. King seconded the motion carried. In my research on retention of public records, the Open Records Office referred me to the Pennsylvania Historical Museum. I spoke with Cynthia Bendroth, Chief Record Services. The Municipal Records Manual, Retention and Disposition Schedule for Records of Pennsylvania Municipalities Approved December 16th, 2018, and as amended March 28th, 2019, is on their website. This manual refers to the Municipal Records Act of January 18, 1968. Under Section AL-24, Subsection 2, Minutes, and I'm just going to read this in part, quote, "Retain recordings of public meetings used in the preparation of the official minutes until the official minutes are approved." My questions: Why is the Board and the Open Records Officer not aware that these recordings are public records and the minimum retention schedule? Why does PSAT's analyst not mention that the recordings must be cut until the official minutes are approved? Has the township ever adopted the resolution as noted in the aforementioned manual? Was the recording retention policy adopted by this Board on August 11th on the advice of the solicitor? Because it appears that the Board of Supervisors adopted a recording retention policy that is not consistent with, and it appears in violation of the minimum retention schedule. I also received copies of emails between Secretary Davis and PSAT's Ray the Road Crew resigning. I will not be referencing those emails because employee issues should be handled in a confidential manner. I'm sorry. It is my opinion that Secretary Davis's narrative in some of those emails are totally unprofessional and may cause liability to this township. However, one of the most egregious emails is dated December 6th. She sent this to Holly and Katie. We have another dilemma. Our elected supervisor-appointed head roadmaster, Mark Lear, is resigning. His head roadmaster position effective 12/31/22. Our BOS meeting is this Thursday, 12/18. I'm sorry, 12/8. Elected Supervisor Jeff King has a brother who would apply for this position if it actually does become vacant. Must he recuse himself from voting because they are brothers? If so, there will probably be a tie vote for the appointment. Mr. Lear would probably vote against the appointment, while Mr. Geis would probably vote for it. How would the tie be broken? Second question: Can two elected, and this is the egregious matter, can two elected supervisors remove the third elected supervisor? At what public meeting, or was it a private meeting, did Supervisor Geisinge-King discuss, vote, or decide to seek information on the removal of Supervisor Lear? Which supervisor or supervisors instructed Secretary Davis to seek advice on the removal of an elected supervisor? Holly Fisher's title at PSAT is Policy and Research Director. Is she a licensed attorney? Because in one of these emails, she gives what can be construed by the layperson as employment legal advice. You know, Mr. Lear, I've attended these BOS meetings for the past year. I've read the article in the Gettysburg Times concerning the resignation of the road crew. While attending these meetings, I have observed... I get so upset over this. Let me just take a minute, I'm sorry. I've observed the lack of respect shown to you. Your opinions really don't seem to matter to the other two supervisors. Your opinion, as you were quoted in the newspaper article, there is a click here, and it's apparent you're not part of it. When I received these emails in response to my right to know request and read the narrative being conveyed to PSAT by Secretary Davis, I admit, I wasn't surprised. Horrified, yes. Surprised? I was not surprised by the lack of professionalism and the lack of confidentiality toward you and former employees. I was present at two meetings where you requested that the road crew employees be given ARC monies to which they were entitled. Each time Supervisors Geisinge-King refused. In fact, I believe it was at the one meeting where the Board voted to give the office employees raises. What a slap in the face to the road crew. Why would anyone want to work where they are not appreciated? I only know you through these meetings, but you know what? You represent your constituents with integrity, and despite all the nonsense and childishness that goes on here, you keep fighting. Well, thank you. Keep up the good work. The questions I ask will be put in writing, and I really expect an answer to them. I'm horrified by these. And I thought you, as the new supervisor/solicitor, should be aware of what you're working with here.
Are you recording?
Yes, I am.
Did you announce that?
I don't have to. It's a public meeting.
You have to announce that you're recording other people.
No.
She never announces it. She records it.
Yes, I did. I'm sorry, but...
After it was done, she announced it.
Every meeting that I was recording.
I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware. Is anyone else recording?
I'm recording, but I have told them I'm doing that every meeting.
I don't expect the answers here. I'm going to put this in writing.
I just wanted to make sure that nobody got in trouble or somebody said that there was an illegal wiretap because nobody announced it.
No, under the sun, I'm very aware of it. I mean, there's actually the advisory opinion about recordings.
Yeah, but it's criminal law to record somebody without their consent.
Not at a public meeting. It's a public meeting.
It applies to public meetings. It applies to public meetings as well.
Well, I'll pull the Open Records tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else?
You're putting all that in writing because I can't remember all of them.
She said she would.
You're going to give us a copy.
I will put my, yeah, I will put my questions in letter form or email form.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes for the December 8th meeting have been circulated. Are there any questions or comments on the December 8th minutes? I have none. I will make a motion that the December 8th minutes be approved as written. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The minutes for the January 3 reorganizational meeting were distributed. Are there any questions on those minutes? If not, I make a motion to accept the minutes for the reorganizational meeting as written. So, second?
I have a second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. The bill list was circulated. Move to the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Will you give us the financial report, please?
Okay, the financial report for January 12, 2023. There it is on the screen. In the general fund, the regular receipts were $39,012.69. Expenditures, $38,374.59. Letting a balance in the general fund of $951,926.04. In the ARP fund, the regular receipts were $22,716.18. That was from the commissioners in Gettysburg, and interest on it was $21.07. That lets a balance in the ARP fund of $268,589.42. In the state fund, the receipts were $14 interest, the expenditures $147,919.20. That totally empties out the equipment balance, and now more will come in March whenever the state distributes local fuel dispatch. And that lets $71,164.45 in state fund. And total of all of our accounts as of today is $1291,679.91. And you can see the balances from one year ago, five years ago, and 10 years ago. So you're holding our end.
Thank you. Is there anything else you have?
The only other thing I had that we hadn't finished in December was the carpet.
Okay, so you'll work on that. Thank you for that. The roadmaster's report for the end of December from Mark was out a couple times for winter We actually did receive the bucket and the knuckle for the backhoe. They brought that, those items at the same time as they brought the new lever. So the lever's here, obviously I didn't get to use it, but I was able to unload it. So that, them two items are now bought and paid for, and that's all taken care of. And I did not get any valves put in on, let's see, Fickus School at the pipe. I've seen there's a picture here, so it looks like there's probably several places that need that done, so probably ought to go around and check things, little valves up and use the backhoe and put that stuff in. So we didn't get a chance to be able to have that help, so it was busy with everything else. That's anything I didn't get finished. Mark, you did work for the... Yeah. Last days. Could you give, make sure we have an invoice that we can give to them? Yes, I talked to Pat. Well, we need, I thought we needed to set the rate. Yes, we do need to do that. No, we don't. It's already actually set. So we did set that at the reorganizational meeting the year before. It was not set for this year. That was set for last year. So if... The work was done. If work was done for last year, okay, that's fine. I understand. Okay? The rate was set. Yep. And the work was done last year. So I've asked Pat to send the bill for eight hours of factory work, remove stumps in the bank where they're going to put their bill. Okay, Pat knows about it. I thought we didn't have it set, but I did get it with Pat after the meeting, and it was actually set. So that's it. All right. Thank you for your time, Mark, and Chuck King for the beginning of the year for the first two weeks.
Yep. The first two weeks, being roadmaster here, I went through all the equipment to make sure it was working order. Spent time doing some delineator posts. Some of the culverts didn't have any delineator marking posts. A lot of them had it on one side, so put in what I had, went and got more today. Field debalanced and down at Fickus School Road, I'd done that. SEI came in today and fixed the tractor. We had a faulty drain on it, the new tractor, which turned out to be a faulty solenoid. And I have pictures there I presented to supervisors. We have a major washout on...
White Ridge Road.
No, no. South Ridge Road. I'm going to be addressing that Monday. I'm going to be putting R5s or R6s in because it is washed. It's only like a foot away from the roadway. We got to do something there because if we get another rain, we're just going to undermine the rig. So I'm going to be taking care of that Monday. And going through vendors lists and so forth, just getting to acclimate myself with all the vendors, looking through and so forth. They are, SEI is coming in to do the plumbing for the backhoe, for the knuckle on the backhoe. Due to it was a high-flow setup, it has to be regulated down, and they have to run the plumbing down because it is extended hoe. They have to run the plumbing down through with the cylinder for the extended hoe. So they are coming probably next week to do that. So that will be all set and done, so.
Just running hoes to hook the knuckle on it.
Yes, they got to run because due to it is a high-flow. They have to regulate it down because they got to go to quarter-inch line. And one thing they questioned me is, is it an alternating high-flow? Dual-operating high-flow? If it is not, it will not work. That knuckle will not work. It's got to be an alternating high-flow, reversible, alternate, dual-alternating, single and reversible high-flow for that.
Check with...
We checked in the cab. There is a switch there. Whether it is hooked up for alternating high-flow is beyond, but they're going to hook it up, and we're going to see. Because there's only one way to find out if it is, if we have a alternating high-flow.
Take readings off the hydraulic.
Well, what they'll do is, it's a switcher. It changes the flow on the hydraulics. They run what, run one way? Because if it only runs one way, that bucket will only tilt one way, period. It won't come back. So we have to...
We would have to go back to the people that hooked the system up, because they were under the understanding that that's what we were hooking.
It has to be an alternating flow. It has to be reversible.
They knew what we were hooking up, so that's...
Now, I was, you know, from the old roadmaster, I haven't had any information or anything, so I'm just kind of learning this on as I go. There was nothing...
That's all new to me, too. That kit was just put in there.
See, CAT's different. I'm real familiar with CAT and stuff. CAT is totally, CAT and case and deer are totally different to New Holland.
Case and New Holland are much alike, so.
So, but yeah, the CAT and deers, they have their, they have their hydraulic high-flow on the extended hoe itself. It's not in, that extends with the extended hoe, so it wouldn't have been such a harder hookup. Now, they just have to plumb everything and make sure the hoses are out of Barton's way with the extended hoe, so they don't have the big loops and be able to get caught and everything.
One thing I noticed that's going to be a problem is, they got the rubber line coming from the boot. Right now, it keeps loosening. They have to keep an eye on that. That's the one thing I noticed while I was using it. The outrenders and everything are working fine, so they did get that fixed at least while I was using it. So the only thing, problem I seen was that line coming loose. Don't know if they got the hoes too short or whatever, but it's working, the hydraulic line is.
Okay, yeah. I'll keep an eye on that.
That's my report. All right, thank you.
You're up.
Supervisors' report?
Nothing was brought to my attention.
Anything that's been brought to my attention and has actually been an issue at my house is the trash. So I don't know what the trash company's doing, but they're not doing their job. So I would suggest that the Board do something about the poor service that the people in the community are getting from the garbage bins. There's been a lot of complaints coming in here, left and right. I don't know about now, because I haven't been here recently, but I've been seeing it at my house now, so I know it's an issue.
Haven't fielded a lot of complaints.
Like crazy. They changed the, missed the Friday pickup, moved it to Monday, Tuesday, and finally, I think Wednesday, they got it done.
Have you, have you been in contact with the trash?
Have.
And their response was?
Well, they were out there and got everything, but then the last word that was out on the street was they sent an email blast out that said that they, the stuff that they had picked up already was what was going to be picked up, and nothing more would be picked up until Friday. I responded to them and said, "You still got stuff left from last Friday, so you better get that before you..."
Well, they didn't. At least they didn't at my place.
When did they get yours?
The following week.
They got it the following Friday. That was sort of common, because I had a lot of complaints from people about the week before Christmas.
There's other people that have been having problems since before the holidays and all that. There's certain areas that are not doing the job, period. They're just not doing it. So the township needs to put the hammer down because myself, I wasn't on board with this, but the Board chose to go with this route, and now we took on the responsibility of making sure that people get their service. That's what the contract's about. So if they're not getting their service, we need to do something about it as a Board, and those things that we can do, penalties and so forth. I suggest we, that's what we do.
Yes, sir. I want to add to them. My name is Ken Donner. I live at 371 Toraway Road. I want to add to Mark's discussion on this. We have had two on-time pickups in the last six weeks. The garbage can gets mighty, mighty full. Luckily, I have an old one at the house. That one was a little full also. But what I don't understand is, these services for the garbage company is all prepaid in advance. Isn't there a law against that? Prepaid services not done? We got a lawyer over there can check into that.
Is the contract through the whole region?
Yes.
Can you give me a copy of that? And then, Gus, do you have a list of complaints?
I got it.
Give that particular and specific issues.
Yep. I think Mr. Worley next door had a problem with them. He stuck the lawyers on them. Poof, the problem goes away, according to the paperwork. I mean, according to the daily paper.
Yes.
Sir, I complained about this last year. I fought for three months about this. There's a default clause, and Henover, no, Conawaya Township got $6,000. Now it went to the township. And this township decided not to do anything about that.
Which township?
This township here.
Honey?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
That's what I say, our neighbor next door, Latimer Township, Mr. Worley wasn't afraid to go after them because it's prepaid on done services.
There was a woman who came to one of the meetings, said that she would get kind of a rebate on it. And I said, "How come some of them got it, and when we would call, you wouldn't get anything?" I take mine to meterers. I refused after, after the mess it was last year.
Hey, it was early. I live at 3509 Carlisle Road. I've been having trouble like Ken here, and through the York Springs Community App, I see where people call Waste Management, and they're getting credit for missed pickups. Really, the whole township should get. And I moved back here three years ago. We dealt with waste management where I lived before, which was Monroe Township, Cumberland County. Waste management got a little high-priced, and in Monroe, everybody was forced to do the garbage. They went and picked up Penn Waste. The price got cut back lower than what we're paying now. And Penn Waste was like clockwork. If they were going to be late, you were notified. Even in ugly weather, we'll pick up the next day. If they didn't make it, you were notified the next day. But they were like clockwork, and I praised Penn Waste. And if the contracts come and do, you should start looking for somebody other than Waste Management.
Three years? Is it three years?
We have looked for other vendors for the last three times, and we have none. So we can only deal with what we have. But the solicitor will get on this, and we will pursue it.
Well, like I said, if you look at Monroe Township in Cumberland County, Carroll Township, Franklin Township, Monique, they force all the residents. Maybe that's what you have to do, and then somebody like Penn Waste might come in and give you a good price and stuff.
Well, I don't think that's a good idea, force a residence to...
Well, part of the problem is, we don't have enough people in the township...
Well, that's it.
...to get any other vendors. We got... To get any other vendors. We got one vendor.
And here's another thing Monroe did. Not only did they do that, we had Penn Waste back, but they picked up for the recycle. But the township was in charge of the recycle. The money the township made on the recycle. I don't know if any are familiar, but usually two weeks before the Fourth of July in Monroe Township, they have what they call Community Day. Big fireworks, fireworks. The money they made off the recycle came back to the community.
We should do some kind of recycling here because you can't put so many things in your garbage anymore. You can't even get rid of. Need a bigger dumpster.
We used to have recycling days here.
Yeah, we. It's it's hard to get rid of stuff, so we did a one day thing.
Well, we do electronics. Between Latimer and us, we do in the spring. We'll have one in May. And then in the fall, Latimer does. That for computers or TVs.
Just got equipment in it.
All right. Duly noted, we will work on that. Zoning officers report.
All right. Switch to students. There were. Five permits issued. Uh, first one was to Rodney David. At seventy five oh three Carlisle Pike. For a twenty four by thirty two foot addition to his house. Uh, Dawn Filts at sixty one forty four Old Harrisburg Road. Uh, replacement well. Previous well went dry. The old one has to be sealed. Uh, First Energy Met Ed. For uh, two sixteen Mud Run Road. Got a highway occupancy permit for up to three electric poles. NBC, that's N B plus C. It's uh, the Reiniger cell tower. They got a permit to add an dish antenna to the existing tower. And Christina Yost at one forty four Slave Art Town Road. Got a um, permit for an addition for a bathroom addition. Eight and a half by twelve foot. Those are the permits. Uh, the old like to report that the old middle school is now demolished. Um, they'll be breaking ground for the new fieldhouse. I got two new homes that are going up in process. Um, when we get to subdivisions, there's uh, two issues. One is uh, Hershey's subdivision that was before the planning commission. Uh, they're granting us a ninety day extension. Uh, because. Uh, there's an issue with the rollback on the taxes. And uh, we have an issue of a waiver. For uh, exceeding a fifteen degrees flow for a driveway. See that under subdivisions. A decision for the Miller's Sports Complex has come down. Uh, we received it from the solicitor, Mr. Keeter. They sent copies of it to the Millers and to their solicitor. Uh, I understand uh, from some neighbors. That they're starting to use it for as a sports complex again. I'll have to check in and I've been by it several times, but there's never been anyone there. But if they are using it, you know, be.
Say that the township have two options. You can start trying to buy them for every day that you see that they're using it. Or you could go and with the both the zoning violation and now the building code violation, you could go petition the court to basically. Put an injunction in place telling them that they're not to use it, and then if they violate that, that they should be held in contempt of course.
All right, well, I'll discuss that with you, which way is better.
Okay.
Have you seen the decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to continue sending.
Just it just came down, Gus?
It was dated November third, right? But I continue to explain a a bunch of circumstances that we hope to bring up here, but he he said that it was sent then. But he reset it to us. Just a couple of weeks ago, so we have it now.
That's all that I have.
Okay. Mr. Solicitor, do you have anything else since this is your first trip?
No, other than just say thank you for appointing me. Um, look forward to working with you on.
Thank you for that. Uh, we have an engineer's report.
Yes. Yeah, I do.
Yes, I do.
All right.
Scott Longstreet. Uh, plan reviewed in December on.
Six thirty five.
Six thirty five Oxford Road. Uh, how these signs as built plan was reviewed in December. Green and Brown Road Project designed to begin this month. Uh, stormwater management ordinance was presented to the planning commission at the November meeting for their review. So I assume they will give us that information whenever they, after they're finished with the review.
Well, we didn't get that yet.
Did not go to the planning commission yet, Gus?
Well, they discussed it, but we need to.
We we don't have the regular.
We'll get them the uh, the.
We need the regular.
The ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think it's the fire company reports.
Yes. Okay. Bender's Bill. Is um, asking you to approve a box card change. Where they move their um, rapid intervention team. Unit from just fires to every. Every call that they get. Rapid intervention team takes care of the firemen, not the fire. They're they're. Good fireman. And that's the only change they have. And they said that um, actually it affected Reading Township, not the two townships that we deal with. But. They're asking if you could sign them and I said normally you ask the other fire companies. If they agree.
Is there anything you have to say that that wouldn't be? If they're gonna. Just follow their fire equipment, I can't see that that's bothering.
No, I wouldn't see that it'd be an issue. Did they say that this is how the other townships operate?
And and he said he expected the problem from Reading and Reading didn't give him any flack at all. And the. The new box cars go in to effect February first, you know, that we had signed each at the end of last year, county. And um, both, that's Bender's Bill, Hydesburg was here also. And they both said that um, they're good with the changes that went in the, you know, February first. It'll be easier for them to make calls. To answer calls.
Uh, Narima report. Uh, you guys have a packet there from Narima. On the uh. Consideration of a. Emergency response vehicle. And. The cost that they think they will occur. They do not have everything nailed down yet. They want to know whether the townships that they. Work with are behind it, so they can move forward with the actual. Ownership and costs of the truck.
They just want to know if we're gonna help participate as yet. Yet a financial agreement.
Yes.
We had kind of pledged those before, correct?
Correct. They they did not get responses from everybody, so that's why they're doing it again. What's yours? Pardon me?
The truck?
I think it's listed in there, Mark, somewhere. I'm not. I think it's a seventy one, but I'm not sure about that.
Well, for eleven thousand dollars, what, you know?
It is a a government issued truck and it has twelve thousand miles on it. And it it is. Does look old, I understand that.
But it's not something they're gonna use every day.
That's correct.
So who's gonna read, who's gonna be responsible for the repairs and stuff if we uh, get into agreement with them?
It'll be divided between seven municipalities.
So anytime the things break down, then it'll be a cost to each township.
Yeah, share, yeah.
As as the way they're talking right now, that's correct. That is not final. They did use this truck as a. Emergency. Uh, meeting place when the. Chicken House in Hydesburg collapsed.
Did they want a verbal?
I think we need to make a motion that we will will be. Able to participate once they finalize all, everything that we agree with.
So here it says there's gonna be a lot of things that need to be added.
Yeah, there's things that need to be added to it.
Standard office supplies, emergency medical kit. Selection of tools appropriate for emergency responses, so that would all be added onto that cost.
That's correct.
Yeah. And here they have. Insurance repairs, supplies.
They estimate the yearly cost to be three hundred and sixty dollars per. For municipality and the first cost to buy the truck at twenty five hundred per municipality. Yes.
You're gonna make that motion contingent, contingent, all seven towns should agree to the process.
Yes.
Do we, do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
So it would only be a motion though, just because it looks like they're just looking for an expression of interest.
Yeah.
But because then they say if there's a general agreement that the final cost can be determined and the procedure is defined for the legal, financial and operational requirements. Also makes it seem like. Didn't even give confirmation from Tyrone Township that.
It's not a for sure.
Correct, that's correct.
So you can make a motion to express the interests too much, but it wouldn't be to enter and send you.
No, 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 legal agree, yeah.
Yeah.
Monetary agree.
Basically, you'd be interested in seeing what they propose.
I'll make that motion that we entertain interest in. Our obligation to, not obligation, but our interest in sharing the cost of this vehicle.
Okay. It's been, is there a second? I will second. It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to old business. DJ Holmes letter of credit for flowing sprints.
I haven't heard any more. Did you?
Well. I thought that they sent us a copy of for fifty four thousand. They didn't. Well. Might be moved point to place up for sale right now. And they got a possible buyer. I'll pursue that with Kyle.
Okay.
Last I heard, they had signed a letter of credit.
We signed the thing saying that.
We would eliminate the first one, but we did not.
We didn't get one for fifty four thousand.
I didn't get a response from that girl, huh?
All right.
Okay, the next is the Narima request, which we already took care of. Uh, review and approve the reorganization items not completed. Um, Assistant Roadmaster, we have an application. Here that everybody has for Assistant Roadmaster. Mr. Greg Gasly. From Quaker Church Road, York Springs. Are there any questions?
I have a temporary's application books. Why? Your work name.
I I talked to the man, yes, he's. He he will, he will take the job at thirty two hours. He would be interested in forty, so. If we need, if we go down the road and see that he is needed, we can. Move him up to whatever times the. Roadmaster thinks he needs help with. I will make a motion that we had Harry Greg Gasly as Assistant Roadmaster. Is there a second?
I didn't even get a chance to interview the guy and there's nothing about him, so. I keep checking that.
Is there a second?
I'll I'll second that.
The new has second, not any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries. Zoning hearing board member, Gus, you haven't. Taken care of that for the solicitor for the zoning hearing board.
None.
The rates for the equipment rentals. Our new roadmaster suggested that we raise the rate for the backhoe to one hundred and ten dollars. The trucks stay the same at one hundred dollars. So I will make that in the form of a motion.
I will second that motion.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no?
No, I'm opposed to that. I think it's aye enough.
Excuse me, Mr. Lear, could you speak up?
Ah, I just said I'm opposed to that. I think the.
Thank you. Yeah, people at at the table seem to talk among themselves rather than to, so that the audience can hear. Thank you.
Uh, the motion passes two to one with Mr. Lear descending. CDL drivers, we do have another application for CDL driver on temporary basis. And everybody has that application.
Is he going to interview?
No.
I shouldn't have somebody being interviewed.
I don't have to oppose this one. This gentleman worked for the township and was asked to leave for several reasons, so I don't think we want to. I'm opposed to employment as well.
Okay. You're opposed, Mr. Lear wants to not appoint him unless he interviews him, so we will put that on the agenda for the next time and see what happens again.
Okay.
New business, PSAT's membership and selective services.
Okay, every year we have to renew our membership with PSATs, and they offer different services. The CDL program, which we can do without. Though that webinar power pass is eighty-nine dollars, and we can get as many webinars as we want for it, and Gus and I both have used it, and I'd be the autograph kid once also. And that legal defense membership and technology security fee, I don't know what that is, forty-nine dollars. And the news archives. We don't order this. You know, we get the books, they'll put it on, you know, make it electronic for you if you want, we've never used it. If anybody wants it, okay. And then there's a the planning commission also can have the membership, and they have it through Ted Decker on here. Then is the news bulletin and the township news subscription. So the whole works, the dues being five hundred and forty dollars. The whole bill is thirteen hundred and twelve dollars. Like I say, I always take that forty-five dollars off, but if anybody wants that, they can have it, if not, I'll take the forty-five off.
Forty-five off for what?
The, to put the, to put the news, township news on an archive.
Yeah.
If anybody wants it.
I, I don't think anybody here was interested.
I save the issues when they come, and then when I get too many, I throw them out.
Okay, I think you can eliminate that, and I will make a motion that we continue to be a member of PSATs at the rates Pat just mentioned. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved to second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries. Mandy Furman's community service, we had a husband and wife here for a portion of time doing community service, and Pat was well pleased with both of them, so.
We couldn't have done that carpet project without him, I'll tell you, he was really good.
The third thing is new email addresses for the county.
Well, the county got new email addresses, and they are their PA.gov now, and our website, we're going to have to do something to put these two together, okay? Inform the public of the new email addresses and discuss buying this. The new email addresses at the county supposedly is, is how, you know, we're going into, we have to have our own domain. Okay, and so you can shop around for domains, Gus said about GoDaddy, and I wonder if Comcast has, I, I don't know.
We got to check into it because I got years ago, I got when we first started talking about websites, about ten years ago. I got locked in with somebody, I think it was GoDaddy at the time, for Huntington@PA.net to get that locked in for us. I think it might, it might have been Huntington@PA.gov. But that was ten years ago, I paid the four fifty for a year.
Four dollars and fifty cents, not four hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, four dollars fifty cents. I'm not quite that gender, but right now, if you Google Adams County, PA, you'll get to the website at the county. If you used another browser, you might have to be required to put in Adams County, PA, at
No, dot.
Dot gov or whatever.
No, at dot gov.
Those addresses that we put out, they're, they're no good anymore either.
Right, so I don't have any trouble finding the website, because I do use Google, someone else might. And I don't know how that works, I like to have our email address at PA.net, which is simple, or as opposed some of the others, but I, I guess we could have two, but then I think that's confusing also. But we should check with Comcast, see what they offer. Get something locked in.
Keep in mind, if you need to contact anybody at the county, they have new addresses, so. And they, and they went into effect December nineteenth, and they, anybody that you would have been in contact with before that had for a period of time their new address at the bottom, so.
Okay, we will keep that on the agenda for next time and continue to work on that. The road grant, roadmaster cellphone agreement, we had an agreement with Mr. Lear to pay a portion of his cellphone, and Mr. Kane also asked for us to do that, so I make a motion that we pay forty dollars a month for his cellphone.
I'll second that.
Been moved to second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries. Anglerland Preservation Board Township Participation, we have not participated in the past, so I think we will leave it as that. Request to attend meeting to discuss county comprehensive plan. Do you have anything on that, Gus, or what? Okay.
It's the last paper in your packet.
You want an update?
Here are specifically updating the heritage historic preservation component of the plan. I would like to have the opportunity to attend the planning commission meeting. So.
Want me to respond?
Yes.
Okay. Conservated Department of General Services Federal Surplus Program. Membership renewal.
Yeah, excuse me, every thirty years, you have to renew that membership, and you have to have your contact people, all their information, telephone numbers, email addresses, and so forth, and bunch of places to sign, but we, we really use their services, you know, I mean, Mark went over there a lot.
Yeah, I make a motion to renew the application like we usually do.
Been moved to second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries. Subdivisions in land development, Gus?
Yes. There are two items before you. One of them is the Hershey subdivision. They're granting us a ninety-day extension, the planning commission recommends that we accept it so that they can resolve a ninety-day, or excuse me, tax rollback issue.
Okay, I will make a motion that we accept the ninety-day extension for the Hershey subdivision. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Been moved to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no?
The second issue, let me get it up here. Is what you're looking at in this here long road is the right-of-way that goes with this house that's built up here. This house was built by Mr. Watts Jr. while Dad owned the rest of his property. In the meantime, the property has been foreclosed on, the bank had foreclosed and sold the property. In the meantime, Mr. Watts Senior built this house down here, and after his wife decided she didn't like living there, he put it up for sale, and it was bought by two veterans from South Carolina, enlarged it and lived there, but they didn't want the son using this driveway here to get up to the house because it was shorter. This right-of-way that Dad gave him, which is twenty feet wide or twenty-five feet wide, and actually belongs to the son, has a steep grade, and then there's a gully up in here. And before the property got foreclosed on, they were, they were going to perform a land swap between I don't have the new subdivision here, but I think they were swapping this piece to go with this, so that they could come up here, which takes away a lot of the seed part, and they could bring their driveway across here. And they were going to swap this piece from this house for this piece over here. But after the bank foreclosed, that subdivision fell through. So now, the gentleman who bought that house at public sale, he has confronted, he wants access, he has to build a driveway here. Well, they've renewed this subdivision. And so, the only problem with this driveway is that when they get up in here, there's a couple places where the slope exceeds fifteen degrees maximum, which is a maximum allowed in Arsaldo. But if they do the land swap, they could come across here and eliminate a lot of it. But I think there's still a little bit here that exceeds fifteen degrees. So, the proposal is that if they do the land swap and meet a couple other conditions, stormwater and everything else, where the, the, the planning commission is asking the board of supervisors to approve a waiver of the fifteen-degree requirement, so they can get access to that house. But it's contingent upon getting the land swap so you can minimize the slope and a couple other conditions with stormwater and everything, and neighbors got to agree and all. So that's a request that comes to you.
We did have in that motion that a limit of how high, I don't remember.
I think it's twenty-three degrees.
Yeah.
So it's not infinity, it's limited to, it's limited to what the engineer estimated the maximum slope to be, which I think is twenty-three percent.
I will make a motion that we recommend the waiver of the fifteen degrees not to exceed twenty-three.
Well, there are the other conditions too.
Plus the other conditions.
Stormwater, stormwater.
Stormwater is what they went in.
Yeah, it was all a Scott's conditions on the.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion because we have to.
And we explored a number of other ways, there aren't.
Just his stuff, he tried to get permission from the other mandarries, offered to pave the driveway, nobody would just go in for it, so.
Do you have to pay attention to that entrance where they put the driveway in there, because I always had issues, you want to talk about washout?
Yeah.
They did blacktop the father's driveway, which helped because it's going to use some worst down there, come out on the ridge, worst down the gutter, so. They should be made to put at least blacktop at the end of the driveway, like our little plan, and run it up so that it's not worse now.
That driveway will be paved.
They're blacktoping all of them.
It has storm.
They need that swell in there.
They have stormwater buckets in under the drive.
Yeah, but he, Mark's talking about the entrance.
Yeah.
Talk about the end, the council driveway, I'm not concerned with what's going on in the back, I'm, I'm concerned about our driveway.
What comes out onto the road?
It's been an issue.
Okay, been moved to second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries. Right-to-know requests, Pat?
Well, we have three right-to-know requests from Marie Degangi. She wanted a recording of the December eighth board supervisors meeting. She wanted correspondence between Huntington Township officials and PSATs, and she wanted a recording of the January third, two thousand twenty-three reorganization meeting. Well, we gave her the recording of the December eighth meeting and gave it to her on a thumb drive. The correspondence between the officials, I made copies for, but I still have a few official, I took an extension, a thirty-day extension on it because I had to mail it out to everybody. So I still have, I believe, three that didn't come back yet. And I have until like the twenty-something, twenty-sixth, maybe, so. And then the recording of the January third reorganization meeting, I didn't record it. So I couldn't give it to her, so she has the questions, you know, she has forwarded questions to the board of supervisors, not to me. And she would like your answer and rating as to why I didn't record it. I didn't record it because I just simply forgot. And it being a reorganization meeting, you don't write minutes like this, you don't write minutes like that. You, you take an agenda and you just put your you made what motion? This was the agenda.
Well, Ms. Davis, that's okay, you don't have to explain that to me, I, I just need my questions answered. You know, what you have to do is fine, you know, I understand that.
Well, I thought I would defend myself to the rest of the room.
Oh, okay.
That I, I simply forgot to do it, okay, I forgot to do it. It wasn't a big deal for us, and because we work off the agenda, I do not write minutes, I say Paul Geis was nominated, and he was nominated by Jeff King and seconded by Mr. Lear. All through that, and I tell them who it was last year so that they have something to go off of for this year, and I didn't just do this now, if you want to look through the past twenty years, they've always been this way. I apologize for not.
I apologize for not recording it, but I'll tell you, the recording thing is.
Yes, we know, but very poor.
But but your handwritten notes are still official minutes though.
Yes, my handwritten notes are stored.
Well, he checks them out.
Well, yeah, I know, but what I mean is, when she takes.
To make, but you don't have to record the meetings, she doesn't have to record them to help her, she feels like she takes.
Well, she takes very good notes.
So she's fine.
And she does that for everyone.
Yeah.
Mr. Campbell said I was too wordy.
I would need a copy of that, I don't have one.
I will give you one, yeah, it's, okay. Yeah, I know, I talked to you on, you know, I told you that that it had happened, so that you were prepared for it.
Questions that she wants you to answer, I don't have a copy.
Right, I didn't, I didn't make copy.
And as far as I am concerned, as an individual, I will have to talk to the solicitor before I answer any questions as an individual.
That's fine.
And I would appreciate it if anybody else who answers their questions as an individual would have them. Made, made to the secretary, so everybody knows what they have said. Upcoming meetings, Planning Commission meeting is January the twenty-third at seven. The Merama meeting will be here February the first at six, so if anybody wants to come and ask questions about the truck. For opportunity. Is that a public meeting? Yes, it is, advertised in favor today. Uh, Supervisors meeting will be Thursday, February the ninth at seven.
Before we adjourn, may I speak to Attorney, um. King. At the beginning of the meeting, I'm sitting here the whole time, I'm very offended that you implied it in a public meeting, that I was somehow doing something illegal.
I didn't imply that you were doing something illegal.
Well, you, yeah, you.
I just wanted to make it aware to everybody who was recording the meeting, so nobody else gets offended by it. That that somebody in the crowds like, well, somebody was recording me without my knowledge, I I just wanted to be clear that you were recording.
And I I would appreciate, um, Mr. Geis, if you would authorize, um, Pat to give him a copy of the May tenth letter that my attorney sent. To you. Oh, good, yeah. Thank you.
Why don't we add to our recording policy that people make others aware that we're recording that in our meetings? That could be said prior to the meeting starting.
Yeah.
What was that?
I know.
There's been people coming in here recording long before she has, no one has questioned that other than me. And it's not an issue, so once again, it depends who you are, if it's an issue.
That's right, it does.
So this should make it fair for everyone.
It was never announced before. Yeah, other people were.
That's that's I find very offensive to me, I'm I'm a retired legal secretary, I don't do illegal things. You don't even know me and and. I'm just amazed that you would do that at a public meeting to bring up the water tapping. I I I, your municipal attorney and the Sunshine Act has nothing in it that it has to be announced, in fact, PSAT sent her. They, PSAT sent her an email indicating. You may want to remind her that anyone in attendance is welcome to record public meetings on their personal. And there's there's no need to announce that, people, people that go to Harrisburg meetings. Do you think everybody stands there saying, I'm recording, I'm recording, I I just don't get that.
I I have clients who pass who ask if they can record meetings and I always tell them, tell people to record that. It's just, I think that's what I.
Well, okay.
As a good thing, so that, it it it's mainly so that nobody else in the audience would get mad, because you're recording something and they're like, oh, you recorded me and I didn't.
But I've been coming to these meetings for like five years and Rocky always recorded and never announced it.
Mr. King, I wasn't here.
Yeah, I'm saying, how many meetings have you been to, Mr. King, this is your second meeting or your first one's official solicitor, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the first many you've made that statement, correct, but you weren't aware of what.
Yeah, I I and if I know somebody else is recording, I wouldn't.
But he's a municipal attorney for other townships.
But it's his first meeting, man.
I know, but.
So it was his first time he has had made that comment.
There's also a sign right over there in the board success is leaving the.
That's what he needs, that's for much, letting everybody know. That's why I'm suggesting that. That our meeting is gonna, it's being recorded at the beginning of the meeting, all right?
It's kind of like the same, we're letting you know, and you let everybody else know, just.
But it's not required and for you to impose that on someone that is not written in the Sunshine Act. Like I said, I I I will call, but I will expect an apology from you.
Make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Been moved in second, all those in favor say aye.